County Board of Supervisors Work Session Tuesday, June 16th, 2020, at 4:30 PM in the gallery room at the Chatham Community Center, 115 South Main Street, Chatham, Virginia. Please, gentlemen, as indicated before, for my clerk to remember to touch your mics on so it can be recorded properly. Roll call.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Butler?
Present.
Mr. Farmer?
Here.
All right, we have him on the phone. Can you state the address you're calling in from?
I'm calling from Rainy and Breezy, 328 West Pan, Piper's Parish, and that's it. No further questions.
Mr. Ingram?
Present.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Here.
Mr. Warren?
Here.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved?
Second?
Are the items to be added first? Hearing the notice. Motion to approve the agenda by Mr. Davis, seconded by Mr. Scares. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, roll call.
Oh.
Thank you.
We got to leave it at some votes, Kevin.
We can't until I get my signature.
Still short a couple of votes. Has everybody voted?
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote verbally?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Still short one vote.
All right, we'll do Mr. Ingram verbally and hopefully he can get that fixed. Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Okay.
Please record the other votes. Motion carries unanimously. For the citizens' convenience, all work session and committee meetings are now being recorded and can be viewed on the same YouTube location as the Board of Supervisors business meetings. Please remember that the board's work session is designed for intro, internal, board and county staff communications discussions and work. It is not a question and answer session with the audience. Accordingly, during the work session, no questions or comments from the audience will be entertained, respectively. Any outbursts or disorderly conduct from the audience will not be tolerated and may result in the offending person's removal from the work session. As a reminder, all county citizens and other appropriate parties designated by the board's bylaws are permitted to make comments under the hearing of the Citizens Section of tonight's business meeting. Presentations. Department head spotlight, solid waste, Mr. Hicks.
Okay, I think I was up for October until last Tuesday, so I hope I've got everything right in this presentation. I'm gonna start with showing you that who, you know, directly reports to me as of right now. And I got Gwen Tucker, she is a senior administrative assistant in the office. She works for me and Chris Lemp and a couple other people. I've got Daryl Dalton over building and ground, Cheryl Boswell over CSA, Scott Budd over IT, Emily Ragsdale over zoning and planning, Mark Moore over parks and recreation, and then let's see, Ronald Shields as a landfill foreman, and Michael Waller as the fleet foreman. In fact, July 1st, that changes. And let's see, Chris Adcock goes under my direction, and then Shields, Dalton, and Waller, let's see, will actually be under him, and Cheryl Boswell I still keep, Scott Budd I keep, Mark Moore I keep, and also, let's see, Ms. Ragsdale I still keep. So those changes will become effective July 1st. Some of the other things I'm working on, I'm over special projects. So I've been working on the industrial park pad at the Berry Hill site, the water and sewer line project for the Berry Hill Industrial Park, the courthouse and jail project, the dam number one and dam number two. Projects, we're still working on those. We've got three new convenience centers we're working on, and I'll show you some of that later. We're still working on our, let's see, radio towers project, and they have not been able to get the system to work. They have set up a lab that will, that will actually duplicate our system, and I think they'll have that in the next few days, and they'll find out why when they turn our system on and shut it down before they bring those two, getting new towers up. The, let's see, the Old Blair School renovation project, I've been working on that, the industrial railroad, and let's see, the Ringo Trail project, that's gonna be FEMA funds. At this point in time, we are still working with FEMA trying to get that approved funding, and I think we're fairly close. We've got several sale companies working on leases on our towers we've approved, too. I think you got a public hearing this evening for a third one, and then just general brewery maintenance and, you know, renovation projects around the county. I'm generally responsible for those. The main emphasis this evening is on solid waste updates. As I mentioned a while ago, we've got, you know, three new convenience centers we're working on, we've got several, you know, personnel changes we're working on. We've, for this current year, any June 30th, we've been very fortunate in, you know, obtaining some additional revenues, which I'll show you on that. At our convenience centers, we're still working on installing the cameras at those sites. We're still working on solid waste enforcement, which I feel you in on, and we've got a fairly good potential for growth in our landfill funding. This is the first site, which is the 29 North site. This is gonna be a mega site. We're gonna have a lot of dumpsters there, we're gonna have, you know, places for tires, maybe building materials and all that. So this is gonna be a fairly extensive site. It'll be the most expensive site, it'll probably be double the cost of the other two sites, but this is the sketch plan. We're working with VDOT on traffic cams, paving the driveway, you know, permits and all that stuff, so it's gonna, you know, that will be, should be completed sometime late this summer, and we hopefully have these out for bid this fall maybe. And of course, that'll depend on the funds, budget and all that. The second site, I lost it there, Kevin, did I turn it off?
It's back.
I think I skipped one. This is the Climax Road site. It'll be a much smaller site, but I mean, we'll have a compactor, we'll have dumpster sites and all that. And the third site is on Straightstone Road, and that's gonna be probably the most simple site. It won't have everything, you know, that all the other sites have, because it's kinda way up in that northeast end of the county there. Let's see, personnel changes. We had two members of our solid waste enforcement team, Michael Moore and Keith Scruggs, and we've changed the title for Michael Moore to Convenience Center Coordinator, and he is now responsible for all of the man sites, which would be Mount Herman, Mount Cross, Roswell, Blair's, Berry Hill. And we also put him in charge of Smith Mountain, because we're doing a lot more there while the lake is up, because we get a lot of trash that does not belong to Pennsylvania County. He will also be responsible for the routine maintenance, you know, of all the other sites, just like, you know, the fences and the signs and all that stuff, and we're working on signs, you know. So when you go to a site, this site's signage is gonna look just like all the other sites and everything, and if the site's closed, we want signs up there saying, you know, your next center is, yeah, Z-Wire. And then Keith Scruggs, we're gonna put him in the, you know, he will be responsible for all of the solid waste violations. You know, we've got him hooked up, and he started doing that today. And then Michael Waller, you know, who used to be over all the sites, he's, you know, he will still have the responsibility for 14 other convenience centers that just has the single, you know, site attendant there. And all those changes, they've already taken place. Let's see, back several months ago, we advised you that a company was hauling mud basically from a pipeline construction project, then they're bringing it to us, then we dry it and use it for field dirt, and they're paying $41 a ton, and through the end of May, we have billed them $214,550 to dispose of the mud. And then Bay's, the trash hauling, you know, signed that, I believe, last month, and as of this week, I think they have brought about 4,739 tons, so that's $201,908. That's just over $400,000 that was not budgeted this year. We've done pretty good with that so far. And I think Delta Daylighting should be here through maybe July or August, so that should help us next year's budget also. The cameras, we've got cameras at 15 of the sites, and we've got four other cameras that are just about ready, the poles are set, we've ordered the cameras that'll be at 58s, Mount Cross, Whitmore, Sandy River, and all that leaves is the Chatham 57 West site, Mount Tabor, and WI Powell, and we think within six months, we should have those sites covered. So we should have cameras at all the convenience centers. As I mentioned, we're still doing the solid waste violations, and this has been going on about a year, and so far, we've issued just about 1,100 citations, and if you look at that, 270 of those citations are for people that should not be disposing of trash in Pennsylvania County. Tires are a big one. We did 142 violations for tires. Scavenging is still a big one, people love, you know, scavenging in the dumpsters, and you may not believe it, but we have a lot of people use the, you know, bathroom at our sites. We've cited four so far, and I probably got another seven or eight sites right now. And through June so far this year, we've actually brought in about $31,450, and I think last year, the, for June, we brought in about $60,000. We've actually brought in about $50,000 since we started this. Back in May, we asked you to close the sites on Sundays, and if you look at our volumes, March 2020 compared to March of 19, was up about 15.9%. April was up about 33%. May was up 21.7%, June was up 26.4%. So we definitely saw a huge increase in the trash while people were at home. And this past Sunday, we opened back up, and I guess you'd assume everything was fine. That was Motley on Saturday about 5:55. So we're still having significant problems with the amount of trash. That is, let's see, rockwork on Sunday, and that is grit on Sunday. So people are still disposing of it just as hard as they can go. As I mentioned a while ago, we have signed a five-year contract with Bay's, and at about 15,000 tons a year, that will generate about $450,000 a year. There is an opportunity on January the 1st for an additional contract at 30,000 tons a year, and that would generate about $900,000 a year if, you know, if we charge them the same amount that we charge at Bay. And in January 1 of 2022, there's an additional contract that would be about 49,000 tons a year, which would give you about $1.48 million per year. And our goal is, we'll probably go out to both of those. As of right now, let's see, we generated about 42,000 tons a year. Bay's is gonna be about 15,000 tons a year, and the first one I mentioned at 30,000 tons a year, the second 149,000 tons a year. So if you have all those contracts, you're gonna average about 136,000 tons per year, based on your existing landfill site. Even at that rate, you've still got 75-plus years of space left. And that's, you know, was, I'm using a, you know, very conservative estimate of 50% of the acreage, and we think we can use, you know, more than that, but that's just a, you know, very conservative effort. I'm not bringing in, you know, two and a half million dollars a year, and you can still, you know, there's enough space for 75 years or more. I don't think that was my last slide. If anybody's got any questions or...
Quick question. Will the extra tonnage require any new personnel or equipment? And two, where do you expect to take these revenues as they go into capital improvements, or are we able to use it for something else?
If you take 136,000 tons, you know, there's a good likelihood that our pieces of equipment will need to be larger, so there's gonna be some capital costs there. Your sales would fill up quicker, so there's some capital costs there. I don't think it's gonna take a, you know, a large number of additional personnel, and there may be some, but it won't be the whole one. The entire money has to be kept in the solid waste fund, you know, so it'll cover the, you know, the opening and closing of the sales and the equipment and all that stuff, so...
But what allowed you to pay debt back?
Yes.
For assets that were paid on your behalf prior to this, that the county paid?
Yes, I think y'all could make that decision as a board if you wanted to do that.
We also met with our attorney yesterday, and we knew this was coming, and we're well prepared for it, but effective immediately, we need to start planning on the permitting, closure, and opening of the next section of the landfill. So we've got about a three and a half to four-year runway, but we'll be starting that work probably in FY '22.
We're on sale.
136,000 tons, our, the current sale would be loaded in about three and a half years, I believe.
My understanding, the permitting process takes quite a while.
Years.
At least three to four years.
And the good news is, and, you know, Richard pointed this out, it's been years ago, that our debt that we incur, the county incur to operate the current working sale falls off the books this year, which frees up capacity we need to start work on the next sale.
Just have one more question.
Yes, sir.
Since I've been getting beat up, are we coming up with better ways for contractors to dump their garbage? I'm still getting complaints about rebar in the areas where they're having to dump, and I don't know, do we have any way to help people with blown tires if they come out there and the tire is destroyed by the landfill, or are we covered by insurance for those type of thing? I'm just...
We normally don't cover that.
I'm just, I get a lot of feedback, negative feedback, and I thought we put this to bed, and it's still...
We've got a small section off to the side where they can dump, and there's a, you know, a pad and a box there or something. Yesterday, it was full, you know, since it's been used.
Well, what do they do if they show up and it's full? Where are they, do they direct them to go out and dump them?
They'd have to dump out there.
I'm just saying, it's not...
Sometimes they're filling up, you know, faster than we can empty it, so...
Mr. Dunn?
I think I might have mentioned it to you before, but it has actually come to my attention with some people that's in my area, kinda watching some things, activity at the dump, and there's some drug activity at some of them, and I was just wondering if we could actually allow the sheriff's department to tie into those cameras so that we could get license plates to take care of, you know, maybe taking care of this problem. You see what I'm saying? I think I may have mentioned it to you, and I talked to Mike and him as well, so I won't say which.
We record all the time, so if they see something...
Yeah.
You know, pull the tape and get the tags.
Now, I saw the grit road...
They've called a couple people we've sat to, so...
Have you? Okay, I saw some of the grit road. Does that camera move, or is it just stationary?
It stays stationary. You can move it.
Okay, because see, you've got...
Once you set it, it's set on that spot that you're looking at right then.
All right, that one that is sitting on is looking at the two dumpsters itself, and then I think maybe some of the activity is around the recycle boxes, and we had never picked that up. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Wonder if we could get a broader view to maybe help police...
If we're not winning this, we can move our camera and just kinda keep an eye on the boxes at times.
Okay, all right, I just, I don't, you never know when. I was just gonna mention that, because I did have a neighbor give me a call, and it has been been looked at on camera as well, so I just thought I'd tie that in, too. Yes, sir.
Mr. Ingram?
Well, what you do have, you can zoom in and out.
Yeah.
I wanted to renew my, I guess, request to look at the possibility of having some form of communication between convenience sites, something as simple as a cellphone. I see multiple benefits to that, you know, emergency, fire, but if you go to a site like, in my case, Berry Hill, and it's full, it really would be nice if that guy could call Roswell or Cascade and see if he has space up there.
How about if I told you we're putting phones at all the convenience sites?
So you are?
Yeah.
Okay, good idea.
They've been ordered, and I think they're getting ready to be installed, and they're on our phone system, so there's no cost other than the, you know, the initial cost of the phone.
Yeah, I knew we talked about it, but I...
There'll be one at each site.
The other thing, what do you, the boxes where you put the large items, what are they called, versus the household boxes?
I'd say open-top boxes we call them most times, the open tops.
This has come up, sometimes people throw big items in there, and it's not really full, there's a lot of little cavities and crannies, but people have been told that they can't put stuff in there if you see items sticking above the edge, whereas in reality, you could put stuff in there if they would just let them, so maybe if you could pass the word along.
Michael Moore's gonna be working on those issues with the site operators.
That's all I have, thank you.
Mr. Davis?
That leads me to this question. When we have problems, who do we call? We call Mike Moore, or do we call you?
Me.
Okay, just...
You have a problem, call him.
Mr. Adcock, yeah.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr....
Colonel's still on watch.
Yes. Mr. Dunn?
Yes, sir. I just, I just wanna say what a good job you do, Richard. If I've ever had a problem at any of the dump sites, or if anybody's ever called me, and I call Richard, he's on it, and I just wanna say thank you, because we had a problem at the one at Motley, I think I mentioned to you, a sinkhole, or it was just, and if you don't go there every day, you don't see it, and, you know, people dropping into it with the tire, maybe knocking the front end out of line, and, you know, I made a phone call, and boom, within hours, he took care of it. So I just wanna thank you for what you do, Richard. I appreciate everything you do.
Any other questions, Mr. Hicks? Thank you, Mr. Hicks.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we've got the Committee and Constitutional Officer Reports, CARES Act Application Process Discussion, Mr. Smithlin.
Yes, sir. Not to be redundant, we did briefly touch on this during our PCSA meeting, but for the benefit of the public, the county has been granted $5.3 million through the CARES Act, and it's called the Coronavirus Relief Fund. It's specifically used to respond and mitigate issues related to the virus. We are focusing on response mitigation and technology upgrades to not only prepare ourselves, but better prepare our community and our emergency responders if this were to come back during this present episode, or it happened again in the future. The school system, as well as a few other external agencies such as PCSA, Sheriff's Department, and others are eligible to apply for this fund. We've received about 50 applications to date. We have met the last two Tuesdays and vetted applications. It's, it's a, it's an interesting and challenging process to make sure this money stays in our county and that it helps our local economy. The purpose is to invigorate the economy as part of a stimulus bill, and all this money has to be spent by December 30th of 2020. So we are already well out of the gate. Our three towns have been provided significant funding through this program and are also applying for those funds. Generally speaking, any items under $100,000 are being approved on a staff level after a three-step process. Anything over $100,000 is brought into the Finance Committee to vet and review, such as this evening where the Finance Committee recommended $290,000 worth of defibrillators for our volunteer rescue squads and their ambulances. We will meet again probably at least once a month, the Finance Committee, to review applications. We are taking a very expansive view of these funds and are hoping to help our school system, help our towns, and to help our responders in the county be better prepared going forward. I have a list of various applications we've received to date. We haven't approved that many. We've pushed a lot back for additional information. We've delayed awarding some until other things that may be more important are vetted. But at the end of the day, we are responsible and stewards of these funds. We have a paper-intensive process to make sure we're available for audit if the federal government or the state government comes forward at a later date. We think we have a fairly bulletproof process, and I'm happy to answer the questions you have about the Coronavirus Relief Fund.
Questions and comments? The only thing I would say, Mr. Smithlin, is wanna be sure, for sure, beyond the shadow of doubt, that once you all have determined something's approved at $100,000, that before it's announced to anyone, anyone, it be communicated. that before it's announced to anyone, anyone, it be communicated to the Board of Supervisors so they know.
Yes, sir.
We don't wanna be.
Blance, huh?
Yeah, we don't wanna be contacted and said, you did this and you didn't know about it. Does everybody agree with that?
I'm good with that. Yes, sir.
Anything else for Mr. Smith? Do we have any bid this meeting discussion items, Mr. Hunt?
I've got them. Just for the record, there are three items that we request you add to the agenda at the business meeting this evening. The first is a motion made during the Finance Committee to allow the Sheriff to lease $120,000 worth of vehicles as marked cars. And also utilize returned vacancy savings money as well as an additional $70,000 appropriation to purchase administrative vehicles for the Sheriff's Department at the Sheriff's discretion. The second item is a recommendation from the Finance Committee that the fire and rescue, or excuse me, that all agencies receiving greater than $5,000 from the Board of Supervisors annually submit to the county their items on a annual form. As well as the recommendation includes that all fire departments be subject to an annual audit, two per year drawn at random, paid for by the county.
It's fire and EMS, huh?
Yes, sir, fire and rescue, yes. And then the final recommendation is related to the Coronavirus Relief Fund that the Board authorizes that up to $290,000 of CIR money be made available to support our volunteer agencies with defibrillators for their rescue squad ambulances. So we're asking that those three items be added to the business meeting agenda.
We also need to add one more to the consent. We're gonna have to adopt the revised PCSA and Boards and Counties Service Agreement. We discussed it at both Finance and the PCSA Meeting Day. That will be added to your consent agenda. Ms. McCluster will type up this and we'll hand it out for, for us to, to edit.
Let's, uh, need a motion for the work session, I guess, now.
Close session.
Yeah.
Add those items.
Yeah, the motion would be just to recommend this to the full Board for action at tonight's business meeting.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Mr. Dudley makes the motion to add those three items and then additional items to the consent agenda as presented by Mr. Smith and Mr. Hicks. Is that correct, Mr. Dudley?
Yes, sir.
Seconded by Mr. Scares. Any further discussion on the motion? Okay, we'll, we got it. Please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote verbally?
Yeah.
Okay, please record the vote. The motion carries unanimously. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session.
I'll be happy to read it for you, Mr. Chairman. We have one closed session tonight. It is discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of the public body. Legal authority of Virginia Code, Section 2.2, 3711A1. Subject matter, Board of Assessors. Purpose, discussion of potential Board of Assessor appointees.
I have a motion. Second. Thank you, Mr. Davis. Second.
Seconded by Mr. Davis. Any further discussion on the motion? All right, please cast your votes.
Mr. Farmer, can I get your vote verbally?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, please record the vote. Motion carries unanimously. Remember, gentlemen, we'll have to come back here before the Sunday meeting to certify. Mr. Hunt, are we set up?
I was just gonna ask that. Ben, Mr. Farmer, if we can't get the speakerphone in closed session, we'll just have to, I'll call you back on my cellphone and put on speakerphone, okay?
Okay, you may hang up on this call.
Yeah, hang up on this, and then we'll either call you back on the speakerphone or on somebody's cellphone for closed session. And then we'll get you back on the speakerphone to certify. And I will read the certification. Being resolved that the meeting of the Board of Supervisors on June 16th, 2020, the Board hereby certified by recorded votes at the best of each Board member's knowledge, only public business matters, lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Freedom of Information Act, and identified the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting. If any member believes that there was a departure from the requirements of the Act, he shall so state prior to the vote indicated the substance of the departure. The statement shall be recorded in the Board's meetings. Kayla, do you, is that a vote or is it just a?
It is a vote. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Farmer?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Dr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Scares?
Yes.
Mr. Warren?
Yes, having completed the agenda for this work session, I declare the meeting adjourned.